I'd like to call the July 11th, 2023 City of Mauro Council Meeting to Order. If you'll stand for the pleasure of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. And we keep our favorite employee, Mr. Wong, in good prayers as he recovers at the conference.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Please, Mr. Wong. We're going to add to the agenda on one item, and that will be right after the board receives resolutions, the discussion from the executive session. Do I hear your question? Add to the agenda. Go ahead, second. Page properly, second. All those in pairs say aye. Mr. Wong.
Aye.
Miss Dean.
Aye.
There it is. Good morning. Good evening. Good CEO. All looking good. Approval of the June 27th, 2023 regular meetings and approval of the June 27th, 2023 work sessions. You had this before. Do I hear your motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question properly, second. All those in pairs say aye.
Mr. Mayor, could you open to the discussion?
Sure.
So, I raised the concern to all the, to the city clerk, the city manager, and mayor and council members that the recording of the amendment does not reflect how the motion was verbally called. And I also, I put the note to all the council, to all the amendments that did not represent, that don't reflect how the motion was being called. With a reference from the recording of the meeting minutes showing that how this the motion will call. And I'm asking the city clerk to explain why would you think the substance of the motion is not that important or either legal to record? And I'm going to pick the first one for the sample. The first amendment, the verbal call had followed the, to add the following verbatim language into the meeting minutes, to the meeting on, minutes on June 13th, 2023. Item number two, council train remark after no vote if the city attorney had not revealed a bid to determine if it is a qualified bid or not. The motion in recorded that council train made an amendment to add verbatim language to to a meeting, regular meeting minutes. The substance will actually verbally call is not in the meeting minutes, so it takes away public transparent. And I am not certain if about the legal matter. And I would like to have the record keeper, city clerk, to explain why do you think that information is not legal required? Either not required or it's not important to be recorded.
Mr. Wong, will you make a statement? Can you make a motion? Can you make a statement? Can you make a?
Mr. Mayor, I am having the floor, and I am just over to discuss it. And I would like to hear the opinion from the record keeper. Who's supposed to keep the record? Explain why do you think that information is not worth it to record in the public record?
It is entirely up to the city council to look on regular sections of minutes. If you want something amended, you will have to amend the motion and ask the city council to approve.
I understand completely that part. I just would like to have a better understanding why is that? To have a better understanding why that information is not valuable to public to be recorded in the public record?
Are you willing to make a motion, Mr. Wong?
I'm waiting for the record keeper to give us an explanation or give me an explanation.
Record keeper is hard to give you a response at this particular point. You have the ability to add the floor, you have the ability to make the comment, you have the ability to make an amendment if the city council chooses to accept that amendment.
Okay.
Do you wish to make a motion?
Yes, I will make the amendment to. This is so. I do, I'm making another amendment to have the first amendment, the second amendment, the third and the fourth amendment in the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on June 27th, 2023 to record exactly how the motions were verbally called, especially the substance of verbatim language being called to add into the meeting minute.
Do I hear a second? Your name, motion fails. Go back to your original motion.
I would like to make the second amendment. So. The amendment is to add, to to record the amendment after the original ordinance number 2023 dash oh four. The recording is missing the accent of adjustment of budget 2024 after evaluated act of number 24. This not recorded, and I would like to have add to the meeting minute.
Do I hear a second? Your name, motion fails. Go back to your original motion. Okay, Mr. Wong.
Aye, thank you.
Question properly, first, probably second. All those in pairs say aye. Miss Knight?
Aye.
Miss Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Wong?
Aye.
Miss Wong?
May, the meeting minutes not recorded the amendment currently and the, from the amendment, amendment number one to number four. And the amendment after the original ordinance 2023 dash oh four missing the recording on accent, the adjustment of budget 24 after evaluate act of number 23.
One down, one up, here it is. Proclamation, this will be the good one. There is a young lady by the name of N. D. Win.
C. K. Win.
All right, okay. Well, we're going to recognize her. She graduated from our high school, was taken in the University of Pennsylvania, and served as the blocking and authority team, Council 2223, in the press. And I promise we can get her whatever is necessary.
We can have two other seniors.
We're going to add them to the next round. Don't forget the top?
Yep.
Can we slide a little bit more, please?
This one's good.
This is good.
For, for, for those who didn't happen to see me attending, you had a series of events that we had. You know, the 4th of July celebration was phenomenal. We had a celebration the next day as well. And a few people in the city really worked tirelessly to make it happen. And occasionally you get a chance just to recognize them for the things that they did. And if anybody knows out there would realize the massive number of hours that they actually put into that, the kindness of their heart. So in this case, it's Mayor of City of Mauro, Georgia, a proclamation recognizing heart of service, Lala Bay. Whereas the definition of a volunteer is an individual who freely offers to take part, and the definition of service is the action of helping or doing work for someone. Whereas occasionally a person comes along with such a heart for service that embodies selflessness and generosity, gives so freely of their time, effort, energy, and support, they become synonymous with the word volunteer. Whereas the City of Mauro is fortunate enough to have such one person among others who called our home, Miss Lala Bay. And whereas 37 years of service to our country, countless hours of community service and city events, as emergency response force, support, addressing traffic control needs, directing traffic, that's what it says. Blood drives, cultural advance, voter registration, job payers, health payers, and more than can imagine. Lala Bay currently serves as the chairman of the Mauro's Urban Redevelopment Agency, where she is working to move Mauro in the right direction for progressive decisions on development and infrastructure. And whereas Lala Bay cares deeply about the City of Mauro, her neighbors, enter here in the Mauro city staff given her time and her care, she has seen as mother to all of our staff. Therefore, I would like the Mayor of City of Mauro to join with other members of the community in recognizing Lala Bay and showing her appreciation.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's talk. This is the least I've ever.
And just right quick, we were also getting our good honey got our gay card.
Yeah.
No, you weren't. Really, yeah. You know, it was just, just really marvelous and, oh, thank you, baby. And it's just wonderful that when you can come out and do something and see so many people enjoy themselves. So that's really giving from the heart back to the city and, you know, to see our children. Because I, I see myself as, you know, a kid when we didn't have stuff like this. But we as a city and with good leadership, great leadership, thank you, thank you, everybody. And me, I'm going to tell you, that, that guy, he worked, I even got a picture of him because I was leaving late at night hooking up trees. Oh, I'm going to tell you, y'all worked really great. So thank you for everybody that did so much. And my, our little volunteers right here, they did a great job. So thank you.
Ms. Alma Floyd, can you please come up?
I may need to hesitate over the car. Hello, good to see you. You look a lot more comfortable today. There's a little side story to the, she was concerned about a ladder that had been left out there. And it was a city ladder. So she already went all the way home. It dawned on her, and she drove all the way back to make sure that it was secured and that the city didn't lose a priceless heirloom.
And it don't belong to a city that belongs to, where, trade, you know?
But, but the ladder's like 15 feet, and she is not. So if you were there, you could, she would not have been able to carry it.
Or lucky that he was there.
It was all good, though.
Yes.
Mayor of the City of Mauro, your proclamation, recognition of service of Alma Floyd. The definition of volunteers is an individual who freely offers to take part. Definition of service is action of helping or doing work for others. Occasionally, a person comes along who has such a heart for service, who embodies selflessness and generosity, who gives so freely of their time, effort, and energy and support, that they become synonymous with the word volunteer. Whereas the City of Mauro is fortunate enough to have one such person among them called Mauro Home, Miss Alma Floyd. Alma has worked for Mauro Middle School for 16 years without hesitation and tiredness, assists the City of Mauro community events such as the Easter egg hunt, collection food for military families on Thanksgiving, and many more. Alma Floyd is seen always around Lala Bay. And they could be described as a Batman and a Robin Jewell. Good. And much more caring and irreplaceable. Alma Floyd selflessly and with her generosity, kindness, give back to her community that she didn't care for. Therefore, I tell the Mayor of the City of Mauro to join with all our members of the community in recognizing Ms. Alma Floyd for showing her appreciation. Oh, I tell you what, why don't we have Victor just hold that thing and wherever it is, so we can. Perfect. Excellent.
Oh, no, I mean, thank you, everybody. For this, and I, I don't know what to say, but anyways, thank you, everybody.
And at this time, our remaining mayor, Trent Lynn, is going to present, in the honor of the mayor, the awards to the volunteers of this event that we had.
The first one, thank, thank you for all the volunteers for helping so we can have this sub event, Freedom Lab and International Lab. And first of all, I invite Menkam.
And what we'll do is we'll all stand up here later and have some photographs with everybody so you can get the full council down here to them. Thank you, appreciate it.
The second one is Katie Board. I invite Jayna.
Victor's really taking selfies if you really look at him.
I can see you.
Well, this is where I'll probably get in trouble, but we turn this way. The mayor has, has a common reputation as a rough fellow. He's a no-nonsense business guy, but he really has a good heart. And this particular episode shows that there was a couple, it was six Tuesdays ago, came into the lobby at about 10:00 to 5:00. They had a summons to the magistrate court. So we were in our office on Monday, in the boardroom. Tuesdays from 7:00 a.m. to whenever. But the city clerk brought him, Victor told us the story, but they want to talk about court. Okay, we'll, we'll talk about court. Well, they had a summons in their hands to the magistrate court of Knight County. And it was in reference to a foreclosure that happened on our own. And this is actually one for their eviction, I just said that would have to move. And the hearing was the next day at 8:30 a.m. Kind of a conclusion at that point, that your home was gone. I'll go next to the couple whose, the wife has dementia, they live right up here in Price and Circle. The husband, they're both in their 80s, he's got some serious health problems. But kind of a hopeless situation at that point, there's not much you can do when you have those kind of, that hearing coming up. Generally, you come into the court, judge hears it, and you find out that seven days later, the sheriff's department's putting your stuff out of this room. They had invested their, they've lived here for decades, they had invested in that, that was a retirement home. When I was chief of police here before, we actually dealt with their children who were coming in to do some fraudulent activity on their bank accounts. They had taken a home equity loan up nine or 10 years ago. Payment was about $100 with the bank they banked with, who decided after they didn't make their payments, they had some fraudulent activity on their accounts, so the automatic payments stopped. They didn't pick that back up. So for less than $1100, they were going to lose a house that was priced at $225,000. It was bottom of the courthouse steps by a company in North Atlanta for $41,000. So not much at this point we can do, kind of hopeless. But that guy likes to do the underdog. Thank you.
He likes to play some, he's a, he's a big time gambler.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I need to catch my breath. So anyway, he went to court the next day. And he fought this thing out in the council. Graciously provided some counsel for them and appointed an attorney. And the good news to this story is, I'm the one that makes that.
The couple has not lost their home. They are. And so we are all thankful for the leadership that John Lample provides in those moments where his bright intelligence shines through. He paid it. So we're, we're just appreciative that the situation ended the way it did. And, you know, this is an unusual situation. It could have ended differently, but certainly we're thankful that this older couple in our community, they still have their home. And so we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Mayor Lampel with this proclamation, and I will read it. By the Mayor Potem of the City of Mauro, Georgia, a proclamation recognizing Mayor John Lampel. Whereas the mayor did selflessly with empathy pursue a resolution to longtime citizens and residents of the City of Mauro. And whereas Otis and Dorothy Mack Wilson have resided in the City of Mauro for over two decades, are retired after working all their lives, and are now both in their 80s and looking forward to living out their lives in their biggest investment, their home. And whereas Dorothy May is suffering from the onset of dementia, and Otis suffers serious health problems. And whereas the Wilsons had taken a home equity loan a decade ago, and due to fraudulent activity missed several payments of value under $1,110, the bank had completed a nonjudicial foreclosure. The home had been auctioned on the courthouse steps, and the Wilsons were facing a dispossessory hearing. And whereas John Lampel took it upon himself to champion a seemingly hopeless cause, attended court hearings with the Wilsons, was instrumental in securing legal representation for them, researched for days, made numerous calls, contacted federal and state lawmakers, checked on them daily, and ensured they, ensured they intended critical meetings and hearings. And whereas on Friday, June 30th, 2023, the hand of God was apparent in a miraculous and unpristine turn of events. The company who had purchased the Wilsons' home signed it over to them. They now owned their home with no mortgage and a right of survivorship, with the deed being recorded at the Clayton County Courthouse. And now, therefore, I, Renee Knight, Mayor Potem of the City of Mauro, join with all members of the community in recognizing Mayor John Lampel for his optimism, selfless dedication, and dogged determination in pursuit of returning the Wilsons to their family home.
Good job. Good job, Mayor.
On this one, you know, this is, this is the key. You have to thank some real heroes. The city council itself, believing in their ability to fight something through. The legal council from the Atlanta Legal Aid, without Rachel Sky putting together a series of statements that didn't have any flavor to them, it was just facts. And having these facts so that when the right people have a chance to look at them, that they can take them seriously. To the people at the courthouse themselves, because we're 45 minutes late for court, to, to be able to handle that process and to, to give us a chance to stay in the game. And it always makes you cheer up when you say a nice station about you. Resolution 2306, a resolution to 2023, the City of Mauro, please give. And position allocation, short, behind the forty. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Page properly, second. All those in pairs say aye. Miss Knight?
Aye.
Miss Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Wong?
Aye.
Miss Wong?
Aye.
We have one item in the executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second? Page properly, second. All those in pairs say aye. Miss Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Wong?
Aye.
Miss Dean?
Aye.
Miss Wong? Motion carries. Comments from the general citizens?
Good job, Mayor.
This was, this was cool stuff. There was story behind everything, from Congressman Scott's office to, I don't mention the bank, to the, 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 the. And you certainly, you know, you're playing into hard things.
I want to, I, I want to, for those that did not come out Saturday and Sunday, you missed an awesome time. It was fabulous, the work, Vee, even though we moved some tables around that we didn't have to. Stepped over a few things, but it's a growing process. And we learned from that, that communication is, is the best thing going for you. That you go to the people that are working it, and when you go to them, then things can be done. You don't ever get that third or fourth person around to come in underneath the wire. So communication, and, and we just had an awesome time. Vee, I'm going to tell you, even though he isn't here, he needs to get.
He probably listening in.
Yeah, he's getting bruised or somewhere.
Continue the sound system, sir.
Yeah, he's getting great, y'all did a fabulous job, you know, and, and they worked so hard putting everything together. And everybody, really, from the police department, the fire department, no injuries. You know, you were expecting with the heat, the heat index, and it was, it was just fabulous. So thank you, Mayor.
I just like to add, piggyback off of what Lana had stated. We had a report last night at the neighborhood watch meeting from Major Woody. And he was just related to share with us about no injuries of all, I think it was over 5,000 people that came into our, that flooded our city in that two-day span with all of the fun activities from the 4th of July and also for the night market. That says a lot in itself, is that the people that did work the event in helping plan all of these things, that they did communicate, they did make things happen, they kept us safe, everybody had a great time, people are still talking about it, and that Mauro truly is the place that they want to be. And I want to personally thank you, Mayor, for making room for the Mauro Women's City Club at your spot there at the table in the front of the event that we had for the night market. The ladies again, we, we have a lot of elders in our group, and it was extremely hot that day. But Mayor Lampel made it, made it his business to ensure that we had tentage, that we had a space, and that we were able to go, and go through and make things happen for our group. We raised over $500 on selling, selling those light-up balloons. So I just want to personally say thank you so much for looking out for us, and not just for us, but for the city and the home. So thank you all.
Counselors from the council, Miss Wong.
Well, thank you for all the staff and volunteers and all the sponsors that make our event become a successful event. And honestly, every event that we have, repeating, getting to grow bigger and bigger. And I hope the community, we will provide the community an enjoyable events every time we do. Again, thank you, everyone included in the attendees. Thank you.
Good job. Again, thank you to all the City Hall staff for everything that you all do. We appreciate the heart that you all have for the city. Demonstrated time and time again, we do that. your dedication, and, uh, just to you, John Lample, we, we appreciate you, we're proud of you, John.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Quah?
Again, I, I, again, I guess it was a crazy event, and I sit back and, uh, look at, uh, the people enjoying themselves, you know, everybody, black, white, Indian, Asian, anybody African, so, you can think you enjoy in your area. That's true, really, the enjoyment for me to, to see what's happening. And, and say, uh, every single event, uh, we can enjoy, speaking as a citizen of Morrow, I'll point out that, uh, even though city employees, they, they get paid, uh, whatever it is, but probably not by choice, sometimes by choice, they have to go out there and, um, stay long hours from early morning to late, and, uh, of the book, people have to go around, people are busy, fast, and they're stressed, you know. You know, I, you know, I, I've been watching them, and they're looking long hours and all that, I wanna say, I don't know, I, I wanna appreciate what they do for, for those, uh, for our community, to have a great event going. And another thing, uh, I'd love to appreciate, uh, the mayor for, I wasn't here, but he, uh, I was calling meeting, he pointed out, mentioned about the, uh, the other couple that he had, and, uh, appreciating for stepping up and, you know, even though at the time there wasn't much help, that you think, oh, we can do, but it, it, it didn't end up well, and, uh, my part of us still pray, uh, you know, together, we, uh, we can do, we can do things, uh, meaningful to our own community. Appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a comment as a citizen on the loss.
Mayor, and members of the audience, um, as a citizen, I am proud of, uh, the work that the city is doing, the council is doing, and, uh, our citizens, they have stepped up, I know that, uh, they appreciate, uh, what the council is doing for, for this city. And, um, as Councilman Quah says, um, I'd like to say as well that, um, we have staff to go further and beyond, and, uh, Public Works Department, even though they are doing work for the city, keeping our city, uh, looking good, and, uh, that they also doubled as event staff support, and I'd like to say thank you to them for being there, and, um, we appreciate that. But my comment as a citizen is, I'd like to say that I am a very proud American, and I love this country, and I am honored to be a citizen of this great city of Morrow. And also, I would like to make a comment on a motion that an elected official, Councilwoman Tran, made a few weeks ago. And that motion was to get, to try and get a change on the voting ballot, which was to include the Vietnamese language. And with an afterthought, she included Spanish in that motion. That motion fails. On the July second, at the International Night Market event that the city held, Councilwoman Tran, along with several others, were at that event displaying a flyer. That flyer was in only one language, and that was Vietnamese. The only individuals that could read that flyer were Vietnamese. So, they continued to engage and solicit signatures for that petition of getting a vote on the ballot to include Vietnamese. This Councilwoman Tran was disturbing to me, because you, as an immigrant American, you took an oath of citizenship that was read and given to you in English. That language you swore an allegiance to, to the commonest American citizen. You also took an oath to be an elected official, right here in this chamber. You swore and took an oath of allegiance to America in English. As a citizen, as an elected official, you should be encouraging citizens to learn to speak, read, and write the language in which they are citizens of this country. But instead, you wanted to get a petition signed to include another country's language on the American voting ballot. I'd like to let you know that that offended me highly, as a woman of color, who's lived in this country for seventy-two years, who has had to march, stand in lines in protest to get the right to vote. And I do it in honor of people who did not have the opportunity or the right to vote. And I'd like you to know that I feel, as a citizen of this city, and as a fellow councilmember, that you do not deserve to sit on that dice as an elected official. You have failed in your oath of office, you have failed as a citizen of this country. You disregarded and you dishonored those oaths that you took as an American citizen. I would like to say that is un-American and inexcusable. Shame on you, Van Tran, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, that's the heavy call, it, uh, it's come directly to me, and I would like to have a few, uh, moment...
Couple things, um, the first one, you know, we have a phenomenal series of events, and we certainly could not have pulled it off without the support of citizens, our guests, which came out to have a phenomenal, uh, anyone who enjoys artists, uh, regardless of whether it's rock or roll, to just about anything, uh, the cultural dancers from, you know, India, um, were phenomenal, uh, the weather was hot, I think, you know, I gotta give it that, uh, but it didn't rain until like later, you know, then it wasn't tremendous to turn, you know, so, so the city performed, and that's what this is all about. Uh, so, so we appreciate that, and, and all of those, we took part in it, uh, it was a lot of work. And we're here, uh, e- each time we do this, and, and as your peers are now starting to recognize you, is you've got some pretty cool stuff going on. There's a number of other things, the capital improvement, top programs, if you haven't had a chance to see, they started putting up the, uh, the chain of fence around the Sears, uh, today, most of that's gonna be some internal stuff that's gonna get taken out before they start to demo part of that building. So, there you have your hundred million hour development, and you have an eight thousand seater unit. So, by the time, you know, twenty-four months passes, some of the same things you saw this weekend will be happening on a regular basis in this good old-fashioned law and order. So, uh, that is by itself phenomenal. And then remember, this thing opens debt for the school system, doesn't owe anything on it, uh, a lot of places like the GCIC, you know, they've got a lot of bond divvied in this to it, uh, you don't have that, right? Um, so, that's gonna work for us, and there'll be all kinds of acts that'll put out there employed, so hats off to the superintendent of schools, there's the school award itself, the county commissioners, and everybody that made that happen. Uh, and, and the proclamation was a little bit of a surprise to me, um, that, that was a good fun. You know, sometimes you, you have to go in and, you know, you try to hold together the, the award, the, the sweep, but the people that were behind it were really the heroes there. And, and sometimes when you come in, you know, you have to know that, you know, this isn't an easy job, right? And most of the people that are involved with some of these sessions, I believe, they, they fight this battle uphill both ways, and they rarely win, you know? So, to be able to not only have, uh, an elderly couple receive their property back, but to have it donated to them free and clear, right? There is no debt on this property, uh, you know, but our job isn't done. One of the things that you looked at while we were reaching this conclusion is, is how do we be all citizens? You know, not, not just in statement, but in fact, you know? And invariably, when you, when you talk about, you know, say, Joe, somebody brings up somebody else in the city who has not necessarily the same need, but there is a need, and you go, that was a little bit more challenging, or you say a little bit more challenging, it gets different. Maybe that person really is not gonna appreciate your help, they need your help, but they have, you know, post-traumatic stresses or a number of other things tragically have happened in their life, but they need the help just the same. So, you're, you're seeing a series of actions that are, are starting to take place behind the scenes to reconstitute some of the things that the city always had the ability to do, but to put them back in place, to put the right people in the programs with the supportive city council, and those people in this audience, uh, to go and find those others, right? And we know there's gonna be a handful, we know there would probably be more needs than there are opportunities for us to be able to solve, and we can't solve everything, but we've at least identified three other issues that I think it would be fair to say anybody sitting in this room would say, yeah, that's, that's not going on, uh, and what are we gonna do about it? You know, so, and, you know, some things are sometimes brought to you, not necessarily what you see, but what is the entirety of it, and then what happens in the long term, right? What are we gonna do tomorrow, what are we gonna do the next day? And, and we're gonna rely on, not only the members of this council, but a lot of the folks in the society, and a number of people that aren't here, you know, as a community, you know, just let it all work out, you know? And we should, right? These are, these are the absolute facts. Um, so, on one hand, we have to have a great appreciation for those that stepped up and did the right thing, right? Because you had to, because it was a right thing. And there's a couple of others, and there's people that certainly know they are, um, you know, that, that are, we're, we're, we're gonna finish what we started, uh, so I'm looking forward to that. And then, I'm getting in this council, because they're very, very simple, so if you think this is a, a...
Mr. Lample, begin, I will respond to your, uh, comment as the email, and just through the reference of why you're sending that mail, because you took this revolver, section twelve thirty, voting right act.